It started with an idea. Orlando, a city whose history had been defined for so long by its visitors, deserved a better class of sporting and entertainment venues designed specifically for the benefit of its residents. Through an historic partnership, the Central Florida community came together to support the construction of three world-class community venues. More than mere buildings, these venues would be icons of civic identity deprived. They would be places to create shared memories with friends and loved ones, and economic engines to continue the revitalization of downtown Orlando, help diversify the economy, and bring the next generation of careers to Central Florida. But this journey to make history wouldn't be easy. As crews broke ground on the Amway Center, America's economy began to falter. Jobs disappear, the housing...
Good morning and welcome to the April 25th, 2011 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today's workshop focuses on one of the city's core services, and that is the treatment of wastewater. And the city of Orlando has long been an innovator in wastewater treatment processes, from the development of Iron Bridge as a regional project, to Conserve Two, to the wetlands. We have created some national models, and without much notoriety, really become probably one of the best innovators in terms of creative processing, I think, of any city really in the country. And Alan Euler has done a great job in that regard. I can see that the supercritical sludge process brings out just a huge crowd. There are a lot of people that are interested in sludge treatment. Everybody that is not an employee of the city of Orlando or working on our supercritical sludge process, raise their hand. Okay, the working press is here, so it will be reported. But really, this is a really important and groundbreaking project, and I'm proud that the city of Orlando is at the forefront of this and being innovative in terms of, we're looking at ways to do business differently, so not only to make our processes more cost-efficient and more effective, but also with a potential to actually generate outside revenue for the city in the future. And not just for next year, but this is another one of those things that we've taken a little while to develop, but it should pay large returns for decades to come. So Alan, would you update us on the status of our supercritical water oxidation project?
Mr. Mayor, if you have...
I might mention that I think everybody knows that Alan was set to retire in about another month, and when he came to let me know that he had made that decision, and I had got him to postpone it a couple of years ago, I actually think, but when he came this time, I said, "Okay, I understand where you are on your life's path, but you can't leave until you have the supercritical water oxidation projects complete." So that is why he is here this morning.
And I'm happy to report that, and so is my wife, Mayor. Well, as the mayor indicated, this morning's presentation is going to be about our wastewater system. And while wastewater is probably not the sexiest service that we provide to our citizens, when you look at the health impacts of partially-treated or poorly-treated wastewater in the community, you'll discover very quickly that it probably is one of the most important services that we provide to our community. It's a really nasty way to spread disease. If you look at Third World countries, and you read about cholera epidemics, and the problem with infant mortality associated with diarrhea, many of those instances are associated with poor water supply and contamination of the water supply with wastewater, which we don't have a problem like that in this country, and definitely not in our community. So the wastewater system, while it is one of those out-of-sight, out-of-mind systems, is responsible for maintaining good public health in our community, and therefore, I consider it to be one of our most important services, but of course. Let's talk a little bit about our wastewater system. We have three treatment plants in the city of Orlando. The first one that I'll talk about is our Iron Bridge facility. If you look at the presentation, you'll see that the yellow area, which is essentially the eastern part of Orlando, I-4 tends to serve as the divider line. So east of I-4 goes to our Iron Bridge facility. The airport area in the 436 corridor currently goes to our Conserve One treatment plant, which is down at the International Airport. And I say "currently" because we have a plan to divert the flow from Conserve One to our other two treatment plants. That will be a money saver for us in the future to abandon the Conserve One facility and divert that flow to our other plants, which have sufficient inventory to cover that capacity transfer. And on the west side of I-4, we have our Conserve Two facility. Together, we have about 72.5 million gallons worth of treatment capacity. Based on current growth projections, we're good in our wastewater capacity until well past 2030. Now, we will have some improvement projects, of course, but from an expansion perspective, we're looking pretty good. Our processes rely heavily on biological treatment. If you ever go to a wastewater treatment plant, the heart of that facility is actually a living organism, or a collection of living organisms, and it's in a process called activated sludge. Activated sludge is living bacteria, living organisms, and they reproduce. And there's more of the little buggers at the end of the day than we need in order to provide good treatment. And so we have to move those solids through the system. And we'll talk about what happens in a wastewater treatment plant when we do that. Now, a wastewater treatment plant has two end products. The first one is very well-known now in the community. It's reclaimed water. The liquid fraction of the waste that comes into a wastewater treatment plant is treated to very high standards and is used to augment our water supply in our particular community. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as well when we talk about some of our innovations. So the liquid fraction is well-known now as reclaimed water. Twenty, 25 years ago, it was not recognized as a valuable commodity. It is today. Twenty-five years ago, you couldn't sell it. Today, people are waiting in line to get it. So you've gone from what was perceived to be a waste product 25 years ago to now a commodity that is readily sellable in the marketplace. The second product derives from the solids that goes into a wastewater treatment plant. Used to be called sludge, but because sludge is kind of a generic name for anything from what sits on the bottom of a ship bilge, to what comes out of an industrial process, to what comes out of a wastewater treatment plant, wastewater guys all got together and said, "We need to think of a new name for this." And so BioSolids is the name that we use for our particular sludge. And the reason we've adopted that name is because it's largely composed of those organisms that provide treatment in the activated sludge process. It is organic by nature. There are inorganic components to it, but it's largely the organic matter left over. Now, that material is not recognized yet as a valuable commodity. I predict in the next 15 to 20 years... Interesting read, if you have nothing else to do while you're on the internet, read about phosphorus depletion. Predictions that the world's phosphorus supply will be significantly depleted in the next 40 to 50 years, and sludge is a very good source of organic phosphorus. So we're going to see the value of sludge increase over time, and the value of phosphorus byproducts from sludge increase over time. So I predict that the BioSolids will have just as much value as the water products coming out of the plant in years to come. So let's talk a little bit about what we do with the solid fraction. We know what we do with the liquid fraction. Let's see what we do with our solids. And I'm going to look at two of our plants. The first one is our Conserve Two facility. That's over on the Cloud Road, our 25 million gallon a day plant. If you look to the image on the left side of the screen, that is an anaerobic digester. The solids are collected from the other processes, they are shipped into that digester, they stay in there for around 28 days, and that creates what's called a Class B BioSolid. A Class B BioSolid can be put on the land as a soil amendment, as a fertilizer, but it has to be done in an area that has restricted public access. Why? Because there's still living organisms in Class B BioSolids. So at Conserve Two, we create the Class B BioSolid in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. It goes through a process called de-watering, through a belt filter press, and we create something called sludge cake. Comes in only one flavor. That material then is dropped into a truck, which then is hauled out from the Conserve Two plant to some pastures in Lake County, where it's used as a soil conditioner there. At Iron Bridge, the process we use is similar. In this instance, however, the sludge first goes to the de-watering system to create the cake. That cake is then blended with lime as a disinfectant. The lime-treated BioSolids then go again into a truck, and that's hauled to a pasture in the south Orlando Orange County area for land application there as a soil amendment. So in both cases, we're producing Class B BioSolids that have found a happy home in a pasture area as a soil amendment, and it's a very good use of that material. Once it's brought onto the landowner's property, our folks, either our own employees do some of the hauling, or we do have contracted hauling for Iron Bridge, that material is deposited on the land. After several piles have accumulated, the landowner then comes, loads it into a manure spreader, and then that material is spread across the pasture, and he rotates through various areas of the field. Now, land application is a perfectly acceptable, perfectly good way to use this material. However, it is not free from problems. This is a picture of our land application fields after the 2004 hurricanes. The rules say that you cannot apply sludge to any land where the water table is less than two feet from the surface. And if you look at these pictures, you'll notice that the water is about six inches above the surface. Makes it very difficult to land apply when your fields are inundated. Because the Conserve Two plant went out west, those fields were dry, we recovered quickly, no problem. Iron Bridge, however, had to store the material on-site. Fortunately, we had some empty tanks that we could stockpile our BioSolids in, and we created quite a stink with the neighbors, literally, by having to stockpile it for about six weeks. And at the end of that process, we came this close to violating our permit because we couldn't move solids out of the plant quickly enough. So at that point, I turned to staff and said, "We need to do something a little different." Well, about that same time, the Department of Environmental Protection came out saying, "We need to change our sludge rules." Land application, if it's done improperly, can lead to contamination of surface waters and groundwater. Our program is well-managed. We don't have that issue. But because land application of BioSolids has received a black eye in other parts of the state, the DEP is changing, and in fact, has changed the regulations to make them a little tighter. This is the statement that they issued during rulemaking, and it essentially puts people on notice. Just read a quick phrase here. "Several local governments have recently adopted or are considering restrictive residuals ordinances." So with that kind of as the backdrop, wet areas couldn't land apply sludge, the DEP saying we're going to make land application more difficult, I turned to staff and said, "We need to get out of the land application business. We're too reliant on other people to handle what essentially is one of the most important processes in our system, handling the solids fraction of our waste stream. We need to find a process that is an all-weather solution that eliminates our reliance on outside entities to be able to handle our sludge." In all of the wastewater treatment system, I believe this to be the weak link. And so we turned our resources on to it, and we hired a company by the name of Boyle Engineering. They've done a lot of work for us on our treatment plants in the past. They are now known as AECOM. Boyle was hired, and they teamed with a company by the name of Black &amp; Veatch to do an evaluation of available technologies that would provide us the all-weather solution that we were seeking and reduce our dependence on land application. So they came up with a short list of three technologies at that point in time. This is 2005. Pelletization, incineration, and SCWO, which I'll just, for ease of saying it, call it SCOO, supercritical water oxidation. Well, let's look at the viability of each of those technologies. Incineration, while it is indeed a good solution to this problem, is extremely costly, and we doubt that we'd even be able to obtain an air permit to be able to construct one. So we kind of quickly marked that one off. Pelletization, all over the place. If you've ever bought a bag of milorganite, milorganite is pelletized sludge. There's a halfway decent market for it. It's somewhat costly to create the pellets. The problem, though, is at the end of the day, after you've done the pelletization, you still have lots of material left over that you have to find a happy home for. So if the market is saturated with other fertilizer products, you're left holding tons and tons and tons of pellets. So we didn't consider that to be a final solution either. Supercritical water oxidation was a new technology, certainly to our industry. It's been around for a little bit, a while, in the defense industry. It's one of the processes that's used to destroy nerve gas and other very toxic munitions. So the process has been around in other industries, but had not yet migrated over to the wastewater industry. Now, what is supercritical water oxidation? It's a high-temperature, high-pressure process that puts water into a state called supercritical. I'll call it water plasma. It exists kind of as both a liquid and a gas, and in that condition, organic material dissolves completely. If you put dissolved oxygen in the mix, all of the organic material oxidizes. In chemistry, that's called an exothermic reaction. It generates heat, enough heat, in fact, to perpetuate the reaction. So it's a self-perpetuating chemical reaction, as long as you keep the pressure and the temperature in the right ranges. What happens at the end? You get complete oxidation of the sludge to a very inert ash, water, metal salts, carbon dioxide, and lots of heat. And with that heat, you're able to capture that heat energy and put it to useful purposes. And we'll talk about that a little bit as we continue on with our discussion of the process. Now, we compared the benefits and the not-so-benefits of each one of the processes, and SCOO had some great upsides, which we'll talk about here, and also had some downsides, which we'll talk about. First off, from an upside's perspective, that technology results in essentially the complete destruction of organic material. You get about a 95% reduction in the volume that you have to deal with. And so there's a considerable amount of material... We're getting to the exciting part. You can stay.
Yeah. Alan, I thought it was pretty interesting so far.
Okay. I'll keep going, even though that is a bit of a disappointment. Wow, the first four people to come in and really... Anyway. So, technology results in very complete destruction of the material. In fact, Alana, much to her dismay, has a cup down at the end, which she will pass down the dais, which has...
I thought it was coffee.
Well, those are the grounds. That is the material left over after processing. I'm kind of jumping to the end pictures because we have successfully processed the sludge through our system. And I'm kind of giving you the history at this point, but that's what's left over. A very innocuous ash-type material, which we can probably find a market for because it has very good phosphorus content. So we may be able to take that and turn it into a fertilizer admixture. We're still looking at things we can do. And Commissioner Rings, if you'd like to bring that back to your office as one of those desktop things, you're welcome to hang on to that.
I'm gonna pass it down to you.
Now, the other thing is that supercritical, because of the temperatures and pressures it operates at, has the highest level of treatment recognized by law. You could do essentially anything with those BioSolids. You could land apply it in somebody's front yard, it can be used as an admixture in concrete or asphalt. It is the highest level of treatment available in wastewater processing today. It produces excess energy in usable products. Carbon dioxide, which actually has a market, that also makes it very green-friendly because we can capture the carbon dioxide that's produced by the process. It has phosphorus as a byproduct. Hot water. Out at Iron Bridge, we're looking at potentially using that hot water and piping it over to the University of Central Florida to satisfy all of their hot water needs. So we do a series of heat exchangers and bring that water back to the city. Heat, tremendous amounts of heat, enough to drive a steam turbine, which would create energy to power the process. So it's essentially self-perpetuating, and it's an all-weather solution. We are not reliant on land application to be able to operate this process. So the upsides looked very, very attractive. But as with all things, there were downsides at the time that we were looking at this. First, in the wastewater industry, the technology had only been demonstrated on a very small scale. Little pilot units that, you know, fit in the front of the room here. You could look at them, see that the technology functioned, but you couldn't possibly take that technology and expand it into something that would work in a wastewater treatment plant. There was much more research and development that was necessary. And in order for that research and development to take place, you had to have people that were knowledgeable on wastewater processing. Well, that's us. We probably have some of the best experts in the country on wastewater processing. And so we made the decision to move forward with the development of the supercritical technology. May 21st, 2007, we brought an agreement before council with Super Water Solutions that authorized city staff to move forward with the research and development of this process. Now, as part of that arrangement, we would turn over the intellectual property and the materials that we had developed as part of the creation of our pilot unit, that would be turned over to Super Water Solutions once we had completed demonstration of the technology. Super Water Solutions would then take that and commercialize it. We're not in the business of creating these things and bringing them out to market. They are. And so in recognition of the city's role as essentially the developer, the venture capitalist who funded that development, the city will receive a royalty payment of $2.50 for every ton of sludge processed anywhere in the world that these units are sold. And we'll talk about what the financial ramifications of that could be. So, you're probably sitting there going, "Wow, Alan, taking on the research and development of this kind of process, what makes you think that a municipality has the ability to do that?" Quite frankly, because we've done it many times in our history as a city, particularly in our wastewater processes. And I'd like to go over some of those to give you an idea of the innovation that the city has already taken forward in the wastewater process community. The projects we're going to talk about, some of them you're very familiar with, there are a couple of them here that you probably have not heard of before. First, let's talk about our water Conserve Two project. Very well-known today, very well-accepted at this point, but at the time that we were bringing Conserve Two forward, this is the early 1980s, the use of reclaimed water for irrigation was in its infancy. And here, the city and county were trying to create a 50 million gallon per day irrigation project. The citrus growers were very nervous that we would impact their livelihood because we were going to apply this to citrus and other agricultural crops in West Orange and East Lake Counties. We made them feel better by entering into a long-term arrangement with the University of Florida, the IFAS portion of U of F, to do research on the effects of reclaimed water on citrus and other crops. And so at that time, we were banking on reclaimed water being successful and not destroying citrus. We didn't know at the time whether it would, but with a leap of faith, we stepped forward, and we invested as a city $8.5 million in the design of the Conserve Two project, and spent over $76 million in the construction of the Conserve Two system. Well, fast forward to 2011. The project now is recognized as one of the leading alternative water resource projects in the Central Florida area. It's one of the largest agricultural reclaimed water projects in the world. The benefits are being recognized by the community not only here, but where the water is being applied. I saw an ad in the paper the other day for selling property, and in the ad, it said, "Has Conserve Two water." So it's gone from being a "not on my property" to a valuable commodity that's part of our water supply plan. This is one of the projects that helped OUC get their consumptive use permit. So it's received numerous awards, everything from an international grand concepture award to a national award from Water Environment Federation and the Water Reuse Association. Very successful project, good return on our investment. The Iron Bridge Wetlands is the next project I'd like to go over. At the time that the Iron Bridge Wetlands was being considered, it was the largest wetlands treatment system of its type anywhere in the world. That seems to be a repeating theme here. When we do these things, we do them in a big way. The wetlands project at the time had been demonstrated on a very small scale at some universities. Tennessee Valley Authority had experimented with them. We were building, as I said, the largest one in the world. The DEP was concerned, they issued us a permit for about half of the capacity that we were building because we wanted to make sure that the process worked as projected. Everything looked great on paper, but again, a leap of faith taken by the city in the design and development of that project. $2.1 million worth of design fees, the cost for constructing the wetlands and the piping system necessary to get the water from the plant to that location, almost $20 million. Return on investment, now recognized as one of the most successful wastewater treatment projects in the world. It's used as an example of successful wetlands treatment systems. If you look at what they're doing for the Everglades treatment and the natural treatment systems they're using there for the removal of phosphorus, they got their start in this project. This was the basis for them doing that type of treatment system. We've also looked at the capacity of the system, and through a series of tests, we've been able to rerate from the original 20 million gallon a day treatment capacity to 32 million gallons a day at no additional cost to the city, saving us $10 million if we had to build that additional treatment capacity for the affluent. So good return on our investment there. We believe it's going to be an even bigger return because the water leaving the wetlands is cleaner than the St. John's River, and that water may be subject to new EPA rules. Our water meets those new EPA rules without a problem. So we're in great position if those rules are implemented, and we've received a great return on investment so far on the wetlands project. Now, here's one you probably have not heard of, the Iron Bridge Rerating Project. This is one that if you're a wastewater geek, you probably know about it, but you guys don't fit that category, so I'm going to tell you about this particular success story. If you look at the lower half of the screen, at the kind of, I'll see if I can point with my cursor here. Right down here is the original 1982 Iron Bridge plant. It used an innovative technology, which unfortunately didn't pay off quite as well as the other innovations that we've done. In about the late 1990s, that technology started to, well, essentially become worn out. It was plastic components, the plastic had become embritled with age, they were being destroyed over time. And so we had the choice of either building new treatment capacity or expanding the other two treatment processes that had been constructed in the late 1980s. And that's this part of the treatment plant here, the more, what I'll call northern part of the screen up here on the top end. Our personnel engaged in a full-scale pilot study using one of the sides of the treatment process to test modifying the process in a way that would increase the capacity. And what we demonstrated was we could essentially double the capacity of those units if we were to modify them in certain ways. Our personnel did that, we ran the tests, we went to DEP and demonstrated the technology. They said yes. And then we hired Boyle Engineering to assist us in developing the plans and specifications for doing... for doing the construction. Now, to do that was $7 million in design fees because we were creating the design as we went. The construction cost was about $32 million. Now, what did we get from that investment? You talked to the consulting engineer, and to construct the equivalent capacity with new treatment works would have cost the city of Orlando $80 million. So, by taking the innovative step of trying to re-rate the treatment process, working with a consultant on an innovative design, we spent $32 million to get an $80 million return. That is a fantastic return on investment. The moment we turned it on, we saved ourselves almost $40 million. So, not one of those projects that you're going to hear very much about, but tremendous savings for our wastewater system. The last innovative project I want to highlight is our Eastern Regional Reclaim System. This started off as a result of a meeting with the St. John's River Water Management District where Henry Dean came to Central Florida and predicted water shortages in the next 20 years. We were in the process of looking at closing the Conserve I facility, and we're talking about a pipeline from Iron Bridge to Conserve I to be able to serve at that point the Lake Nona golf courses in the original Lake Nona development. So, it was a small-scale reclaimed water project. After talking with Henry Dean and listening to the water supply needs, we invested in building a multi-jurisdictional regional system. Now, at the time, Bob Haven was alive and over at OUC, and he called this the Tom Lothrop Transcontinental Pipeline. Tom was the Wastewater Bureau Chief at that point in time, and he brought the concept forward to council, and Bob just kind of pooh-poohed it. This project is one of the projects that allowed OUC to get their consumptive use permit, just along with the Conserve II project. And so, with this project, we invested six and a half million dollars roughly in the design fees. Our contribution to construction was 45 million. We received an EPA grant, a St. John's River Water Management District grant, and Orange County, Seminole County, and OUC all participated in the construction cost of this system. It's one of the largest government cooperative reclaimed water projects in Florida in existence today and has paid off beautifully for the agencies that are participating because it's now recognized as part of their water supply plan. We're going to be able to bring over 20 million gallons of reclaimed water to those various jurisdictions, and within the city of Orlando, we'll supply, oh heck, I'd say probably 30% of our water supply needs just from reclaimed water. So, this has turned out to be a great return on investment for us from a resource perspective. From a revenue perspective, we're already realizing over half a million dollars a year in revenues from the sales of reclaimed water. We just added Baldwin Park onto that list, so that number's going to go up probably by another 25%. So, a financial return that we're beginning to recognize from a resource project. So, that kind of sets the stage as to why we believed that our staff, in combination with the Super Water personnel, would be able to take an innovative project like supercritical water oxidation and adapt that technology to the wastewater industry. And so, I'm going to give you the project update today. We started the design work at the same time we were negotiating the agreement with Super Water back around 2006 and completed in late 2007. A combination of our crews and some hired contractors constructed the unit. And I'm going to throw in a little plug for a field trip. If any of you want to see something that is absolutely cool, come out to the plant and take a tour of the supercritical water oxidation project and recognize that city personnel did almost every bit of that work. Construction was completed in about early 2009, and from that point forward, we started doing debugging and testing. Debugging and testing took us about 18 months because as we would run, we'd find out that a theory that had been proposed to us wasn't quite right, and we would fix it. And so, we had our wastewater staff telling MIT professors what was wrong with their theory and adjusting the process. So, really interesting dynamics there. And over the 18-month period, we developed the process to where it was operational. Now, that takes us to where we are today. In late 2010, we ran a series of subcritical runs in the 340 to 350 degrees C range. Still very warm. We need to get it up into the 400 range or up into the 500 degrees C range. We did that two months ago. So, we have successfully demonstrated the technology with our unit, and we're now at a point where we're prepared to go into the transition with Super Water Solutions. Now, what's been our investment on this innovative project? We have invested $3 million in soft costs, the design concept, and going through how we would construct the unit. And we have five and a half million dollars invested in the hard costs, the construction of the unit and the programming that's gone into it. Now, what's going to be our return on investment on this particular one? On the previous projects, I have the benefit of talking about them years after they have been implemented, and so I can tell you with great confidence the success that we've had. Well, I'm projecting with great confidence what I believe the success will be and what the return on investment will be for this technology. We believe that this technology will give us long-term compliance with whatever regulations the state and EPA adopt with regard to sludge. It will give us an all-weather solution to our sludge weak link and make that a strong link in our process. It will eliminate our dependence on land application. It'll take away that odor situation if we have to store sludge. And based on our $2.50 royalty payment, Super Water has very conservative projections of the marketability of this product, and we would be capable, we believe, of getting $60 million in royalty payments over the next 20 years. Now, here you take what's previously viewed as a waste product that we have to pay to land apply on a farmer's field, and it has the potential to bring $60 million worth of revenue to the general fund over the next 20 years. That is innovation that we're trying to turn into reality. Now, just to make sure that this wasn't Alan being a nut again, we hired a ECOM, Boyle Engineering, to do a relook. Said, "Okay, guys, five, six years have passed since we started this. Where is the market today with regard to technology? What's comparable technology? What does it cost? What would it cost us to adopt that technology in the city of Orlando if we wanted to compare it with the cost of doing supercritical?" And so, we've lined up those technologies. A ECOM did an evaluation, and it compares the capital cost, the operating cost, and the total annual operating cost of a particular option. Land application, no surprise, is the least expensive. It is also the least reliable and the least predictable, and it really isn't that far away from the cost of doing supercritical. $3.2 million a year for land application, $3.4 million a year operating costs for supercritical. If you go to gasification, which is the next available technology, that's kind of come onto the marketplace since we have been developing this. Gasification's a little bit more expensive, but we're going to talk about the business arrangements on how this technology can move forward, and we believe that the offering that Super Water will have on one of the business arrangements makes Super Water's squoil option much better for us. And we get a return on that investment through our $2.50 royalty. We bring that technology to market, we start realizing that return. We looked at pelletizers and incinerators again. And if you look at the operating costs associated with them, it's one and a half to two and a half times the cost of Super Water's system without giving us the same reliability and benefit. So, we believe that we've made the right decision with that technology. Since we have demonstrated the technology, we are now at a point where we're ready to turn over the pilot unit and the intellectual property associated therewith to Super Water Solutions. And we're here to talk a little bit about a transition plan. Now, on today's agenda, which is one of the reasons why we're doing the workshop today, item I six or seven, I forget which one it is, is a lease with Super Water Solutions to lease the property that the pilot unit sits on out at Iron Bridge so that they can now move into commercialization of the unit. And so, before you today on consent is the first transition document that we'll be signing with Super Water to commercially develop the process. We're working on a third amendment to the original agreement that was adopted by council in 2007, which will clearly detail the terms and conditions of that transition, and I hope to bring that to council on the May 23rd meeting. So, with those two items moving forward, we will be transitioning the development of this unit to Super Water Solutions. Now, with me here today are, right behind me, let me jump to that, oh, where did that go? Oops. Well, with me here today are Don Morgan, sorry, Don Morgan, who is the Chief Executive Officer with Super Water Solutions, and Copper Yaw, who's with Waterway Finance. Both of those gentlemen are going to talk about our transition plan. And Don, if I could ask you to join me up here?
Thank you, Alan. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to participate in your workshop today. Before going through our business model, I did want to recognize that in the six years, excuse me, five years or so that I've been associated with this technology and this project, it really has been a pleasure to work with the city of Orlando personnel. I have witnessed a can-do attitude that's second to none, so it has truly been a pleasure to work, Mr. Mayor, with your team here.
Thank you. Lift your mic up, just a hair, you're a little bit taller than Alan, I think. There you go.
Thank you. We recognize that new technology brings inherent risks associated with it, and most entities such as the city of Orlando are risk averse. They're not in the business of taking on risk. And we factored that into our thinking as we go forward such that we could position ourselves to manage that in an effective win-win type situation. So, with that as an opening, there are several options that we are offering in our business model, and we are considering obviously outright sale of equipment, and that's the simple, straightforward, you buy it, you own it, you operate it, fairly straightforward. The difficulty associated with that potential option is it assumes all the entities who are going to use this technology are comfortable, have the capability and the resources to operate a high-pressure, high-temperature hydrocarbon processing system. That being said, if there are risks that are unacceptable to the operating unit, operating entity, we're prepared to build it, own it, operate it, lease it. Options to purchase, we're essentially open to whatever makes sense to any particular entity. You could easily visualize negotiating a contract wherein Super Water owns, builds, operates the unit, and the entity has an option to purchase at some point in the future where they believe they're more comfortable with the technology and the ability to operate it. So, under that scenario, we think we have a pretty good model that'll address just about anyone's unique requirements associated with the technology. Next?
Up and down.
Thank you. We took a look at, we'll call it a pro forma schedule, as to what a commercial project would look like to address the needs of the city of Orlando. We could see entering into a design agreement with an engineering contractor probably by June or so of this year, and we've already initiated discussions. We've met with the engineering contractor of choice and recognizing where they are with their present workload and capabilities. That's very much a doable challenge for them. We would see completion, essentially 90% completion of all the engineering, and when I say engineering, I'm talking detailed design, equipment specification, completion of process engineering, et cetera, probably by the end of this year. We would obviously like to capture what I would call the knowledge generated specifically by the city of Orlando team. They have great hands-on tacit knowledge, if you will, and we would see capturing that value through a QA QC review of the final drawings, et cetera, probably first of the new year, January or so of 2012. We would see the start of production, which is basically buying equipment and assembling, initiating in February of 2012, construction being complete essentially around the end of the year onsite. Factory testing would continue, would start probably middle of the year and run through the end of November. Construction and site modifications similarly, summer of 2012. Delivery to the city, December 2012. Startup and testing, January 2012. And if there's successive units, they would obviously be staggered with concluding units two and three, June or so of 2013. So, order of magnitude from where we are today, if we were to start ideally with an order, say, June 2011, you would essentially be completed in an 18-month period, including all detailed design, engineering procurement, and review with the city personnel.
And actually, you've got an updated version of the presentation which calls for some time to discuss our financing plan. And Copper Yaw with Waterway, if I can invite Copper to come up for a moment and talk about the plan for financing the project moving forward. Copper?
Mr. Mayor, let's see if I get this microphone right, get the right height. First of all, on behalf of all of us, I would like to amplify what Don said about the nature of our appreciation. The leadership in this community, beginning with the mayor and the commissioners, the pattern of the success that you've had with respect to private-public initiatives of this character, the leadership that your staff have provided are absolutely extraordinary. I've had the privilege of being here with people from all over the world, looking at what has been done for this community and other communities like it, and it is breathtaking. The technology, however, is only one aspect of what's breathtaking as I look at it. The other's what I call the soulful commitment of the people who are involved because references made earlier to the ability set that has been shown and the commitment, I really do commend that you should see it because it is not just how important this technology is, and I'm going to speak about that in commercial and financial terms in just a minute, but the people behind it. This is as pure and elegant an example of leadership as I have ever seen, and you all are to be commended for the inspiration behind that, the tradition of innovation that you have established and what has been accomplished here. A word about the technology itself and how that ties to the funding. You've heard a distinction in terms of how this process has been confirmed, or the technology has been confirmed, between subcritical and critical. The difference is more than incremental, and at temperatures as high as 600 degrees, you get to an area that is beyond the anticipated reach of our EPA. The subcritical success achieves their AA rating, which is the highest rating they have. So, for a city to have sponsored an initiative that goes beyond what our federal government thought they would ever see by way of a solution to a problem as important as this in an ecosystem that is as fragile as Central Florida is absolutely extraordinary, breathtaking. And without the soulful commitment of the people who've been involved in this exercise from top to bottom, it simply wouldn't have been possible. A word about the tradition, both going back and going forward, because I think that's important to understand the context of what we're talking about. This technology in conventional technological terms is ancient, it's more than 20 years old. It was originally developed at MIT for NASA when it was thought that there would be a human colony on the moon wherein waste treatment and water treatment and water purification standards would have to be absolute. Until environmental standards on planet Earth got to the level that they're reaching today, there really wasn't much of an application for it. So, what Alan and his group and what you all have sponsored here has been a transition from something that was developed a long time ago for an entirely different purpose to what the EPA would characterize as being beyond the extent of its own imagination, extraordinary. extraordinary. In terms of funding, and as Alan described it, the transition to the public-private partnership, we're ready for that now. The reason we're ready for that now is twofold. On the one hand, that which was claimed has now been demonstrated, it has indeed gone supercritical. The technological issues between it and its commercial applicability are deemed by all parties to be entirely manageable, and therefore can be completed within a matter of months. So the first thing we wanted to do was to ensure that we got to that point, because with that, the funding for this takes on a different character than if we had not reached that point. That gave us some time, and during that time, we wanted to take a look at the world beyond the City of Orlando, and to visit with people here, show people here what had been developed here. Orlando is a place that everyone in the world understands, everyone in the world is happy to come visit, and it is therefore a perfect place for a technology, particularly an environmental technology, particularly in an ecosystem as fragile as this. People want to see it, they're anxious to see it, and it brings with it a great deal of credibility, for which you are to be thanked as well. We've done that, and when I say people all over the world, I mean people from all over the world. In the last two weeks, there have been people here from four continents. What they have seen is, to borrow Alan's phrase, or another of Alan's phrases, something which doesn't exist anywhere else in the world, as simple as that, to a higher standard than exists anywhere else in the world. So the leadership represented by all of you is, and I'll say this for the last time, extraordinary by any measure. Now that we know what we're doing, and now that we can gauge the breadth of the appetite for this, Alan mentioned that he thought the financial assumptions were conservative, they are, they were developed before it went critical, they were developed before a global market for this was assessed, or frankly, could have been assessed. That's all finished now. So over the course of the next thirty days, as you all are moving towards your May 23 meeting, the documentation for the funding will be proceeding along exactly the same pace, along exactly the same timeline, ironically, to the date. So we'll have a formal update at the time of your next meeting, which you would like to have as part of the next meeting. In addition to that, as you all consider how this deploys, as you continue your permitting for the next stages of the transition, we will keep pace with that over the course of the next month, over the course of the summer, and over the course of the ensuing schedule. What I do on behalf of Waterway is a privilege. Waterway works with a number of institutions, both professional services, financial, engineering, insurance, and otherwise. It is a global proposition, and its reason for existence is technologies that take waste and convert it into energy. This is a quintessential example. Our relationship with MIT is ubiquitous, they're involved with everything we do, but so are a variety of other institutions. At the end of the day, our model is philanthropic, not commercial. So when we look at what this community has developed, and how what this community has developed might be applied to other communities, we see an environmental model, we see a commercial model that's viable, but most importantly, we see a philanthropic model that keeps pace with that. Everything we do for your purposes, as a large city, is maximized. Ultimately, what MIT will do is to see with us to the proposition of its miniaturization, so that much smaller and much poorer communities all over the world can have access to smaller versions of exactly the same technology. So what we are about is a philanthropic mission through technology that stands on unsubsidized commercial principles. I thank you all very, very much for the privilege of standing before you.
Copper, if you could, I think you left out a little bit of a predicate for exactly who you are and what Waterway Finance Limited does, and then your exact role, because when you're talking about financing, if you could explain, you're talking about the commercialization and development of that, and I think we might have left out something. There are some people watching on TV that would have, are experiencing this for the first time, so if you could just go back and explain exactly what your role is, what Waterway Finance is, and then when you're talking about developing financing, exactly what you're talking about.
With pleasure. Waterway is six years old. During that six-year period of time, it has assembled a group of technologies. It is going through a process similar to the one we're going through in this room, where those technologies are either taken from an incipient stage or taken to a commercial stage. That process has consumed the last six years and will consume the next twelve months. The purpose of the business, as I said, was to be associated with paradigm-shifting technologies of this character, so nothing with any precedent whatsoever. I mentioned waste to energy as a category, that's a new category, because it is not one that either in this country or in the world, we've taken terribly seriously at this point in time, which is why we face a lot of the problems that we do face. I mentioned global, because the problems that we face here are interesting, America is a fountain for technological innovation, but it is not necessarily the only market, it may not even be the largest market ultimately for these technologies. By finance specifically, I assume you're referring to amounts?
No, exactly what you're financing.
We are financing two things. We're financing all of our responsibilities as anticipated by the joint venture here, by the public-private partnership here, and at the same time, we have a parallel interest in the extrapolation of those technologies. Our interest is in making them available to the broadest range of communities possible, your interest is in participating to the extent of the royalty. But I think you have an interest beyond that, and when I talk about a soulful commitment, I think it falls into that category. The people here will be very proud when people on four continents are enjoying this technology, and they know the source goes back to the City of Orlando, Florida.
Okay, very good presentation. Alan, you want to come back up, and we'll open it up for questions, and let's see, Commissioner Schien, then Commissioner Diamond, then Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Alan, I'm going to try to, I apologize for the condition of my voice, but I'm going to try to, I hope I'm clear enough, but, you know, thank you for this, it's very innovative, and, you know, people don't understand, you know, people fuss about taxes and what they have to pay for services, and they really don't understand the amount of services they actually enjoy. And this is one thing that I tell people all the time, it's like, well, do you do something as basic as flush your toilet, you want that to go away, you don't understand the cost and the number of people it takes to make that go away, and now you're taking it to another level of, you know, figuring out how to make a technology which not only is safer and more ecologically friendly, but potential to generate revenue, that's just amazing. We're not there yet, but people have to understand these cuts, 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 cuts things, you know, they're not, it's not good business, but we're figuring out a way to be innovative, and I congratulate you for that, that's just amazing. So, now, correct me if I'm wrong, so it's going to cost about $3.4 billion to operate this SQuo system?
That is an annual operating cost, and if I run back up to that slide.
And it's much cheaper than any other technologies.
That's correct, any other comparable.
Except for dumping it on the ground, which doesn't, you know, is not a long-term solution, and there's a potential for, you said $60 billion over three years, I mean, $60 billion over twenty years, so that's about $3 billion bucks a year, so does that mean that we're at a potential with wastewater be able to break even and not have that as a potential cost?
Actually, Commissioner, the way we are planning this, and I'm glad that you brought that up, the wastewater fund is an enterprise fund, and it is funded through the user fees. The users of the wastewater system are going to have to pay for the treatment and disposal of both the liquid and the solids. Those users are realizing a benefit on the reclaimed water side, because we're now deriving some income from reclaimed water, and that helps to offset some of the cost of providing treatment. The users of the system also have to pay for the sludge to go away, the biosolids. They're currently paying that $3.2 million for land application. The thought was that we would be able to use the wastewater system to help create revenue opportunities for the general fund. The wastewater customer is paying that cost regardless, they're paying it today. The revenue return, we had intended to come back to the general fund to help supply some of the city's revenue needs there.
Right. But again, that's what it actually costs to provide the service, and if we can sell the end product and be able to make a general revenue return, that's a good thing.
That's correct. The other way to look at that, Commissioner, is if we were to adopt one of these other technologies that provides us the same level of treatment, it's one and a half to two and a half times more expensive.
More expensive, right.
And there is no return to the city's general fund of any revenue stream whatsoever. It is pure cost in that instance.
So this is, is they are paying the actual cost of what it is to provide the service, because sometimes people fuss about seeing an additional, and I hope, I hope, I'm so sorry, I can't talk. So there is, this is the actual cost of what it takes to provide that service, so they are understanding, okay, enterprise funds are at the exact cost, the same thing with garbage collection and everything else, that's what that costs to provide the service, but what they're getting back at the end of the day could be, you know, the return to the general fund, to where it is a benefit to each customer.
That's correct.
Okay, now, well, I think it's amazing, I think it's great, I congratulate you on that, and even, you know, putting a man on the moon is sexy, but getting rid of poop is not, but, the bottom line is, they can always stay out in space for so long, because we, you have to get rid of that. The bottom line is, we're finding a sustainable way, I know it sounds ridiculous, but we're finding a sustainable way to make our planet more healthy, and that's amazing, and it's great to be on the front end of that. I'm sorry I can't talk, but I'm very excited about it. And talking about the ban on the boot, is there a potential to be able to use some of these unemployed NASA scientists to be able to help us with this?
I think we're ahead of the NASA scientists.
You guys are ahead of them, that's awesome, I like being ahead of the rocket scientists, that's a great thing, thank you, Alan.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner, and while it is the recommendation of the solid waste or Public Works Department on the revenue that would be generated ultimately, that would be a policy decision that would be made by council, whether it would remain in the solid waste enterprise fund or return to general revenue.
Commissioner Diamond?
Thank you, and thanks, Alan, that was a good presentation, and I certainly appreciate your innovation and creativity in looking at different solutions. Let me just make sure, and I probably just didn't hear where you spelled all this out, but I want to make sure that I understand as far as the development of this technology, and then ultimately, the payment of the operating costs. Are you saying the city pays the $32 million upfront, or are you saying this company pays the $32 million upfront, or is it some other arrangement?
On this particular slide, where we have the cost, the $33 million for implementing, my recommendation at this point, Commissioner, would be that we start off with the last business model that Don described for you, which is, they do the design, build, own, operate, and we pay a tipping fee. And that way, we're not fronting that capital on the first units that come in, the units are demonstrated, we're paying a fee for the operation of that unit, and the point in time where we have the capital dollars to be able to buy the price down, at that point in time, then we would make the investment to buy those units and own them ourselves.
Okay, so you're saying they would pay that?
That's correct.
Okay.
My initial recommendation is that we do either a lease-to-own, or we do a design, build, own, operate, and we pay a tipping fee for them to process.
Okay, and as far as the operating cost, then, is that an operating cost the city would pay every year, or is that an operating cost they would pay every year, or is it some other arrangement?
The operating cost shown here is what the city would pay for that particular technology, on all of the technologies here. That is our wastewater fund operating cost for that particular solution.
Okay, and is that plus the tipping fees you mentioned, or does that include the tipping fees?
If we were to not buy into the capital, then you would have to add a capital component onto the $268 operating fee, so it's probably going to go up incrementally by the capitalization of the unit. So that's why I was referring to, if we wanted to do a buy-down of that tipping fee and have them to continue to operate, at some point, we would be investing the dollars in the capital.
Okay, and then as far as the royalty, is that, you said that was $250 per ton? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay, when does that kick in?
That kicks in when another party purchases a unit and starts to process sludge, and that's anywhere in the world.
Okay. Are there any people that have agreed to do that, or are there any people that are looking at doing that?
We've had a number of folks express interest. The City of San Francisco has come in, Louisville, Kentucky has taken a look at it, there's a town in South Carolina, Miami Dade is keeping tabs on it, and we've had recently, as Mr. Yaw indicated, folks from all four continents come and look at the technology, and essentially, everyone is waiting for the commercialization of that technology.
Okay.
A comment I'd like to add, Commissioner, is the cities that Alan refers to are just United States cities. We've had a great deal of interest expressed, interestingly enough, in a number of developing countries where their current, there is no technology in place, it's basically, as this Commissioner indicated, no one in the United States considers sludge once they flush the toilet. However, in developing countries, that's just raw sewage that goes out into the streets, the streams, the rivers, what have you, it's an amazing issue that we take for granted. So the discussions I've had with a number of cities, Rio de Janeiro in particular, Sao Paulo in Brazil, have expressed a great deal of interest, and the $2.50 number that Alan has referred to, that would be included in any processing that's done anywhere, with the exception of the City of Orlando, who of course has it royalty-free.
So you're saying the city would get the $250 per ton on, you said sludge, I'm going to try to say biosolids, right, isn't that the phrase? So that would be any biosolids anywhere in the world, any other system might use?
That's correct.
Okay. And as far as the $250, Alan, you'd said you think the value of biosolids is going to go up over time, just for the reasons, and I think you mentioned an article that, I don't know if I have a chance to read it, but I appreciate your mentioning it. Why would we not want to either index that or do something to make that go up over time to match the increase in the value of the biosolids?
Very good question, Commissioner. At the time that we negotiated this agreement, the concept was a concept, and so the $250 was a number that we agreed with SuperWater Solutions, we did not have an index in it, because at that point in time, five years ago, the concept of value of sludge increasing over time really simply did not exist. The phosphorus predicament that I spoke about earlier in the presentation is something that's become much more, shall I say, advertised within the last twelve months. Certainly something we have the opportunity to look at as part of Amendment Three. At this point, however, it may be difficult to negotiate that, because we had already negotiated the terms of the exchange. Now, what I will point out is that with our own materials, we always have the opportunity to market those materials and derive benefit from our own materials that we're processing.
Okay. Personally, I think it's something I'd like to look at, and I think you should look at that. I'd also like to know, just to get, and we don't have to do it now, I'd like to just get some more information on this company, and their background, and how they do things, and some things that we can look at, because I think that would be good to know. And I also want to ask just generally, so you're, and I want to make sure, you said that basically that technology works, you feel like you've gotten all the bugs out, and you think it's ready basically to go full-scale with it, and then even take it on the road, is that right?
The one thing that we need to do is change the reactor orientation. We flipped the reactor around, and I believe we've got a commercially viable unit. So last bug, turn it, we've already demonstrated the technology works, now what we're doing is optimizing the process.
Okay, and you've got enough space for all the machinery and equipment you need at your existing plants?
Yes, we do. We have two facilities, one at Iron Bridge, one at Conserve Two, that we would be able to put the plants inside of. One's the digester building at Iron Bridge, and the other would be probably the sludge press facilities at Conserve Two.
Okay, good. All righty, well, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Lyman? And that'll...
Commissioner Lineham, and that'll be followed by Commissioner Ings.
Thank you. Just a few questions. First of all, I'd like to go back to, I guess, the time when Tom was here, and he was the public works person when I arrived, and then Dave Mesker. And of the $206 million, or a little bit above, that we've invested in Iron Bridge and wastewater over the last 13, 14 years, is there any way to calculate real dollar amounts that the residents receive, whether it's direct in terms of their billing, or in terms of fees going into either the enterprise account or into general funds? I think people like to know what, if we're going to spend their money, how they benefit from it.
I think we can characterize that, Commissioner, particularly with the savings, for example, on the, the rerate project, because the wastewater user fee has two components. One of them is used to pay for the capital costs, the other one is used to pay for the actual operating costs. So we should be able to determine what the difference in fee would have been had we not done some of these projects.
And I think that's important for people to know. I know I've been through Iron Bridge, I remember Conserve One, I think that's gone away now. But Conserve Two, Dave and Tom were very, very helpful in making sure we were able to look at the technology that we were dealing with, including literally having that water so clear, once it was processed, that you could literally drink it. I didn't choose to, but that was Tom, of course, was always trying to get you to drink water from out there. But I believe, and for my district anyway, and people, I believe in general, want to know what is the return locally. We appreciate what's going to happen in South America, and Central America, and Africa, and parts unknown, it just makes sense. But I think the, the, the benefit, we have got to be able to extrapolate that and say, this is what you will, will benefit. The other is, in terms of my issue of, for many years in public works, has been dealing with who does the work? And I know the last few months, working with Byron and Kevin, that you have brought more diverse faces to this picture. Where are we in this business model about diversity? And who's engaged in this?
Commissioner, I'll have to ask for Don to come up at this point. With it being a fledgling company, they have the opportunity to structure their policies in such a way that I believe they'll be able to satisfy some of your questions.
But don't we, as the, shouldn't we be the ones saying to him, this is what we desire? Is that, I mean, is this not the, he tells us, or we tell him, or are we going to negotiate this? Just want to know.
In that regard, Commissioner, anyone that does business with the city of Orlando obviously has to work within our MWBE programs. I'll let Don speak to how he structures his company to be able to satisfy those particular items.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lineham, I, I appreciate your, your, your concern. I can assure you that compliance is one of the foremost considerations that Super Water operates under, including safety as, as paramount importance. If the city of Orlando has any requirements that are over and above those with which we are normally familiar with, I'd be certainly pleased to address them to ensure that here again, we are compliant.
Thank you. I love the, the little buzzwords of the safety and cost effectiveness. But as the Commissioner says, everybody poops. So I'm just thinking that there, the diversity in that area needs to be a part of what we're looking at. That's what I will be looking at, whether we're looking at sale, or whether we're looking at lease-to-own. And it concerns me when we've invested so much money through the years, and someone comes along and for almost a de minimis amount of $33 million, says this is the way it's going to be, when we've been working on this for so many years, and things happen through the, the, the accumulation of technology progress and pushing it to the line, that we can have something more substantial than just safety. I think black people want to be safe, Hispanics want to be safe, women want to be safe. So I think that's not a good line. I would just like to know what is your, your moral or your business model in terms of diversity?
Our, our business model in terms of diversity is to ensure that there is no discrimination in any fashion, whether it be on the basis of race, religious beliefs, or, or any other unique discriminator that could, could present itself.
Thank you very much. I do believe that council ought to really look at these options if we're moving forward on companies' cultures and philosophies that gets beyond what is our basic desire. And with this kind of economy and market, jobs have got to be, I mean, if you're going to spend a lot of money, I just believe, and you all hear this all the time, about jobs. And we live in a very diverse community, and we have established one, and I just want to make sure we're on the same page. But there was one other thing, Mayor and Council, I heard that concerned me, and I believe that was Don who said this. I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, so I'm calling you Don. He said Jacobs is the engineer of choice. And normally, when we're dealing with city business, but I have seen that a minute, a number of times, where there's a sole source, or you go out and select your company before there is an opportunity to do any of your RFPs or QFP, whatever it is, your qualifications for this. I, that took me back. That really took me aback to say, there is a company of choice already selected.
Commissioner, we're not doing the RFP. We're hiring, or contracting with Water Solutions to develop the technology, so it's their engineer that they're procuring.
And I, and I heard that, Mr. Mayor, but I heard him say design bill. So the point is, he's saying that even if we invest this $33 million, they would have already selected this company.
May I respond to your, your concern, Commissioner Lineham? We evaluated half a dozen of the world-class engineering contractors that have the capability to design, build, and, and assemble this technology. And of those, we, we selected, we're, selected, we believe that Jacobs Engineering in South Carolina does far and away exceed the requirements that we would have. And for those reasons, from a technical and capability and a design-build capability, we think Jacobs could certainly meet your requirements. If the city has a preferred engineering contractor other than Jacobs, we're certainly interested in discussing that and understanding what that capability might be that they could bring to, to the table.
I will not even pretend to know about this technology, but I do know about business models, and I do know about our own humanity. And I meant to ask you, what is a QA and a QC anyway?
Quality assurance, quality control.
And that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure the community gets its full information as clear as possible. And when someone here walks away not knowing, or not having input, I think that's bad for the community. So on another front, and going to South Carolina, I know that's only five hours away, but I'm just about being local. I guess that's as local as you can get in terms of who is capable, so that's not a big issue, but it's just one of my issues. The other, and I believe Cooper, and the only reason I'm saying Cooper, because I didn't get his last name, but I do know there was an engineering firm, it was Cooper bump, 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 or bump, 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 Cooper. Is this the same person?
No, ma'am, it's not. And the gentleman's name is Copper.
His name is Copper?
Copper Yaw.
Copper who?
Yaw. Y-A-W.
Y-A-W.
There's a slide in your presentation which should have the gentleman's names.
That was the one that Alan somehow was...
Yes.
Got skipped.
Okay. I, I just heard you say, was it Copper or Cooper?
Copper.
Copper. Okay. Got it. Okay. And that was regarding the public-private partnership. Alan, can you explain, what does this public-private partnership would look like? And he actually started, was pulled up regarding finance, but he went into some other things before he got to the finance model, and maybe that is a finance model, with the city being the public component, and his company or these other companies being the private. So what will that yield us? I mean, what does that mean for the community?
Commissioner, the partnership arrangement that we have had thus far has been the city is the public entity. And we have developed the intellectual property associated with the project. The private partner in this instance is Super Water Solutions, and Copper's firm is working with Super Water Solutions to bring the funding necessary to commercialize the technology. Those two have a relationship, we're not part of that particular relationship. So our relationship from the public-private perspective is with Super Water Solutions. And the benefit that that relationship brings is twofold. First, after we hand over the technology to them, they will in turn build the units that will help to solve our weak link in our system. We will have to find a solution one way or the other, whether it's a pelletizer, or an incinerator, or a gasification system, or supercritical water oxidation. We believe this represents the best-cost alternative that provides us the highest level of treatment. So part of what we receive is the technology back, which helps to satisfy one of our needs. On top of that, comes the $2.50 per ton royalty payment, which we negotiated into the agreement. And so a revenue stream comes with that technology as well.
Without any indexing, I think I heard you say to Commissioner Diamond...
That's correct.
Because this happened five years ago, so we've really been working on this five years.
Yes, ma'am.
And so there is an agreement that we haven't voted on that doesn't include indexing. Is that what you're saying?
There is an agreement that you voted on in 2007, which does not include indexing. That is correct.
So we did vote on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Was that, did it include any possibility for royalties at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Or did we vote on it for...
The, the $2.50 provision was included in that agreement.
Okay. Alan, I'd like to see a copy of that agreement, please.
Be happy to provide you with one.
Thank you. I'm sure I have it somewhere, but my office is like a black hole for holding all these papers. It's just too much.
Commissioner, would you prefer an electronic version of the agreement?
That's fine. I can pull it off. I can download it as soon as you send it to me. That would be great. And normally, I would ask Atlanta, she's real good about pulling these things, but I'm sure you know the specific item. So I would appreciate that. Explain the tipping fee. I know we're saying $33 million to implement, or that the private company could pay, and then we will just be engaged in the tipping fee. So what kind of dollars are we talking about on that end?
That would have to be negotiated with Super Water Solutions. The, the concept behind a tipping fee is very similar to what we do now with the landfill. If you're hiring someone to provide you a service, you're paying a fee for that service. In this instance, Super Water Solutions would be operating the unit, they would pay for the unit, and just as any other vendor who's providing a service, you're paying a fee for them to provide the service. So that, that fee would have to be negotiated.
So we're saying, we pretty much started this technology, and then we pay for it later on? So would our benefit not be, everything is free?
Our benefit is that when we purchase a unit, there is a restriction on the cost, which is in the original agreement. Our benefit is that we receive the royalty payment as they commercialize it.
So that's our payback, is the royalty, and not any other cost? Since we have the facility, we've had the technology that we have been able to advance to now, and our minimum amount we will get will be the royalty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The rest we pay for, which we would have to pay for if we didn't do this anyway, but I understand what you're saying.
Correct.
I, I, I'm fascinated by the technology because one thing I have done, primarily because of jobs, is to keep very close tabs on what is happening in our public works department, just tracking who is engaged. Who are our local engineers engaged in this, outside of city staff?
The firm of AECOM was the primary that assisted us in the evaluation. There were a number of subs associated with that. They have, they, AECOM, has been in compliance with our MWBE requirements. I can provide you with a listing of the various firms that assisted us in that effort.
Yes, thank you.
Be happy to.
The other part was under, Cooper said that...
Copper.
Oh, Copper, I'm sorry. I have Cooper on my, on my notes. Sorry. Copper, Mr. Yaw, is it Yaw?
That's correct.
Mr. Yaw, that's better. He said that this venture is a commercial, environmental, and philanthropic venture. The philanthropic piece, is that for countries underdeveloped, or the philanthropic piece is because of the, maybe once we're able to move this technology abroad, the low cost? Or the philanthropic piece is because our world needs this process? I just didn't understand, and I was thinking the philanthropic piece, I thought would come back to this community at least, so that we have the minimum amount of dollars here, since we've invested so much to get to this stage, even with grants and whatnot, and the fact that we have our enterprise dollars, and even today, I believe, we're going to be voting on changing our loan ceiling from, I mean, we're increasing it so that we can have a broader, I believe, and maybe I misinterpreted the agenda item. So just, what is the philanthropic component? Just taking care of the, the, the sludge? I mean, just moving that out of the environment? Our triple component here, what is that?
All of the above.
Move the poop, make it cleaner in the community, and make a business of the commercial. So that's, that's three components I just mentioned.
Well, and, and you, you presented a very thoughtful list in terms of intended recipients or reasons for the philanthropy. All of the above.
Thank you.
It's as simple as that.
Well, we're not far off of many thoughts here today. Thank you so much, Mr. Yaw.
You're very welcome.
Okay. I think at this time, I have finished my primary questions. I may have some later. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Let's see, Commissioner Ings and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. What's your name again? Since you're leaving us.
Just a short timer, I think.
Oh, yes, right. Alan. Thank you very much, Alan, for the presentation today. One of the things I was concerned about was the, in the return on investment, specifically in the piece dealing with rib, ribs flows.
Yes.
Were key parts of OUC. What's rib flows?
A rib is a rapid infiltration basin.
Okay.
If you were to take a tour of Conserve Two, which we'd be happy to arrange for you, now's probably not the greatest time because we wouldn't get you into the citrus groves to do a little picking, because they have some great navels there. But next year around, I'd say February, have Vic Godlowski take you on a tour of the Conserve Two facilities. And what you'll see is that it is a dual-use project. Part of the water is used for irrigation of citrus and other agricultural crops. The other part of the water goes into a rapid infiltration basin. And that basin then allows the water to percolate through the soil and recharge the aquifer. So it is a groundwater recharge aspect of the Conserve Two project. So not only are we saving water by using it for irrigation purposes, we're also adding water back into the aquifer to be used for drinking water elsewhere.
Great, great. And so how does that, how does OUC benefit from that?
OUC gets their water from the, primarily... OUC gets their water from the primarily lower Florida and aquifer.
Okay.
And as they pump that water out, they create something that's called a drawdown. So you can imagine, like say you have your straw and your soda, and you're drinking through that straw, soda is being kind of pulled down into that straw, you create kind of a void around that straw if you were to look at it in a very small scale.
Right.
On the big scale of the wells that OUC is using to supply us with our drinking water, as they pull water out, they're drawing the level of the water in the aquifer down in certain areas. Now geologically speaking, you can draw down here, and you may not see the impacts right where you're withdrawing water. In this case, some of the impacts that are seen via computer models from OUC's withdrawals are in the Winter Garden, Clermont, and Apopka area. The fact that we're putting water out there in Conserve Two, we're actually building a mound of water in an area that otherwise would be seeing water drawn down as a result of our withdrawals in use in central Florida. And so by having that mound of water there, it actually allows OUC to withdraw incrementally more water because we've offset the impact that would have been created by their withdrawal.
Okay. Is there a cost to that towards OUC? I mean, do we benefit other than helping OUC from a monetary standpoint?
OUC does not pay us in that regard. Those programs have been in existence since 1986, and it was one of those happy, fortuitous moments that we had that program in place. And as a side effect of the program, they were able on their permit to take credit for the mounding that's occurring at that location.
Okay.
Now, I will point out, Commissioner, that OUC, as part of their consumptive use permit, has to bring water to other areas to mitigate their potential impacts, and that will be at their cost, and they will be paying for the improvements in the water necessary to do that.
Okay. And then, when Commissioner Lyman was talking about MBE programs, et cetera, you know, and also local job opportunities, and that's where I was wondering, do we actually get any local job opportunities specifically in the build, in the design, the bill, and also the daily operation of this particular plant?
Super Water organization will require the hiring of operators and maintenance people and technicians. As Orlando will be the first location, it makes absolute sense for them to hire Orlando-based people to provide those services. The construction, let me kind of frame the picture for you, which is one of the reasons why they're talking about using a firm like Jacobs. The intent here is to build modular skids, just like you would buy, for example, a generator for your house. It comes already in a package with wheels or feet on it and an enclosure and a little control panel, that's a modular skid-mounted piece of equipment. The idea here is to have someone who builds those types of units in the industry, whether it's the chemical industry or the petrochemical industry, but somebody who has the capabilities to design and construct skid-mounted units, so that as you're bringing those units into any installation, you're bringing in a limited number of skid-mounted pieces so that your installation becomes cookie cutter and fairly easy. So there will be local site work that has to happen at every one of the installations, but if things go as planned, the units will be modular, come in and you have a pipe that connects one to the other, you have control wires that will need to be run, so there will be less opportunities for construction participation at that point, but still some available.
Okay. And then, how did we come across this relationship with Super Water Solutions? Why them and no one else?
Why them and no one else is because they were the holders of the patents for the technology that had been developed at the point of time that we were looking at it. In 2005, when the consultant did the evaluation and did the literature search for available technologies, there was one group that consistently came forward. And the gentleman who had the patents was a professor by the name of Mike Modell, and he had a relationship already with the Super Water Group, and so when we approached them, they came to us with a business proposition of, why don't we develop this technology together? And in exchange for your participation, we'll provide a financial incentive for that part.
Okay. And how can we benefit from, in sales, from this technology, specifically in dealing with other cities, other countries? If this is going to be the first, obviously within the world it sounds like, how can we benefit, the city of Orlando, benefit from that?
There are multiple benefits that you can derive, some financial, some intangible. Anytime we bring a visitor to central Florida, and you'll probably laugh when I say this, I'll use the Wetlands project as an example. We bring 15,000 visitors to that Wetlands every year, to, not only from the local area, but it is actually on the European Environmental Tourist List. They will make organized tours to bring people to central Florida to see various things like the Merritt Island Seashore, and they'll take them to our Wetlands. So we have visitors who are coming in to see these facilities. We get international visitors to look at Conserve Two all the time. We get international visitors who come in and look at our Wetlands all the time. I fully expect, when this is operational, that we will have international visitors who come in, and the very typical pattern is, they will come in on a Thursday and a Friday to view the technology. They will have brought their family with them, and on the weekend, they take advantage of the fact that they're in central Florida, and they'll visit the various attractions. So kind of intangibly for us, we have the reputation of being an innovator, but we also are bringing people in to view these technologies, and we're resolving a major issue that we have. And then the tangible financials, as more people come in to see this and the technology goes outward, the more areas where it is applied, the greater our royalty returns become.
So will we receive any royalties from this technology specifically if, say, England were to invest in it? Would we, the city of Orlando, receive royalties from that?
Yes, we would.
Okay. And we know how much that would be?
$2.50 for every ton of sludge processed.
Okay, okay. And within what period of time? Because both commissioners have asked that question as it relates with indexing. So is this contract good for, say, five years, three years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years? And we don't have indexing in there? I mean, we can't come back? Is there something that we can come back and discuss now, or?
That will be, at this point, a very good discussion with Mr. Morgan after we're finished with today's meeting.
All right, Mr. Morgan. That's all I have, thank you very much, and I really do appreciate the presentation, and specifically I'd like to be there to see it. I believe that item is I-8, and it is on McLeod Road in District Six, so I would definitely be interested in seeing how that actually goes and how it comes up.
Actually, Commissioner, that's out at our Iron Bridge Plant. We would like to put some in at McLeod Road, once they've commercialized.
All right, man, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
So we'll have to take you on a bit longer of a field trip.
Well, we can go on a longer field trip, I don't mind. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Stewart.
Alan, thank you. Every time you speak, I feel a little bit like a student in a classroom. And I feel like I'm talking to professors, so I feel like, a little bit like I have to ask some questions, and I know the answer is in there, I've just got to figure out how I can understand it. But I appreciate the work that you do and your dedication to the city. We've covered a lot of things up here, but I want to kind of get just back to some of the financial stuff, because I just kind of want to understand it just a little bit better. When you talked about your long-term financial considerations, on a couple of slides prior to that, you talked about a design fee and then construction costs. Are those costs we've already experienced so far today?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So we've invested $8.5 million in the technology to get to where it is so far?
That is correct.
Okay. In that capacity, in that investment, what's the capacity we currently have in terms of our pilot program?
The, what we'll call full-scale pilot unit, is a five-ton-per-day unit, designed to process maybe as much as seven and a half, maybe as much as 10. Right now, we're running it in the five-ton-a-day range.
Okay. And that probably is, would be conservative, you would not want to take a pilot program and run it to max. You'd probably want the longevity of it, you'd want that to run 80 or 90% for a longer time as opposed to try to cap out, just from an operational standpoint.
That's correct. The other perspective on that is, it was not the city's obligation to try and maximize the treatment capacity through this unit. Our obligation under the contract was to demonstrate the technology.
From an appearance standpoint or from an operational standpoint, do you see multiple of these pilot, run in serial or run in, run in an interface where you will, each will be able to do kind of a five-ton processing, is that what you're seeing?
This will be like any other manufacturing line, where you have a standard-size unit, and you put in multiple units in parallel to meet whatever the capacity needs are at whatever facility you're going in. Typical standard-size units for this model will likely be, a five-ton would be a small unit, 10-ton, 20-ton are probably the next size increments that you would use. For example, at our Iron Bridge facility, we would put in probably three 10-ton-a-day units, and you would have one that would run at partial, you might put in four so that you'd have redundancy, so as you're taking a unit down to do maintenance, you would not lose out in capacity. And as you needed to add another modular unit, you could add a five or a 10-ton or a 20-ton-a-day unit, depending on the capacity needs of your system.
The total capacity we need, we have for the city is roughly about 70 million tons a day? Or is that our capacity?
For the city of Orlando, it's going to be less than that. And the reason it's less, at the Iron Bridge Plant, although it's rated for 40 million gallons per day, we're serving five other communities through that facility, it's a regional treatment plant. Our capacity in that plant is only 20 million gallons per day, a little bit over 20, not much. So you look at our sludge needs, and we're going to be around 45 to 50 tons a day, and that's at two different facilities.
In your mind's eye, the idea is that you would take and run these at both locations? I guess we started Iron Bridge, that's where our current plan is. The long-term plan would also then include Water Conserve Two, I guess that's correct?
Correct.
And then any other expansion that we have as we need to, this could be actually built into that expansion.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, of course, opportunity for a cooperative and cover in a southwest area that's not in the city, but much like we did with the predecessor to Nona and the work we did with OUC, we can accomplish the same task.
Absolutely. If there are other communities that desire to process their sludge, then Super Water or the city could set up a program whereby they can truck their sludge into our location and it can be processed.
Okay. Now, in the long-term financial considerations, knowing that we've invested 8.5 million, and I think it's a good, sound investment for us, if, is your opinion that if we were to invest in the capital of that, that would come to $33.6 million?
That's correct. If we were to purchase sufficient capacity for our system.
And your recommendation, now, operating costs would be just operating costs, no matter what they are. If we bought the equipment, we still got to pay for the operating cost. So your goal, I mean, your plan now is to figure out how to create a partnership with Smarter, with Smart Water?
Waterway.
Huh? Waterway?
Well, Waterway is the financing and...
Right.
Super Water Solutions is the...
So we'd be able to get access to their financing of the capital cost for operational costs, is what we're trying to do?
That's correct.
So we avoid us having to go and get $33 million to go build it, effectively? Is that correct?
Correct. Until the point in time that we desire to buy down the capital component in the unit.
Now, in that capital cost, you mentioned to, when Commissioner Diamond asked you, the cost per $268 that you estimate, I guess that's a cost per ton?
That's correct.
Okay. Is any of the, that capital cost, there's no capital cost in that 268, that's an operating cost per ton?
That's correct.
So there's additional cost of acquisition or leasing of the equipment to accomplish that task, and that would go up, what, about $15 a ton, you thought?
I don't have a number on that. That's something we would have to negotiate with Super Water.
It'd be something above the 268 in terms of the operating...
Correct.
In terms of that operating cost? Okay. All right, great. I am very, much like Commissioner Sheehan said, very impressed with the technology of doing this, and want to quickly move towards gasification on the other side. I mean, kind of want to line these up, because I think that the long-term benefit of being a world-class city is to look at world-class solutions for these things that we, all, most of our technology is known by pushing a button in a SimCity program that says, oh, I'm now going to build a water plant. And what they don't understand is, that is a significant impact in our community, and it's also the one thing that helps us limit and control our growth, much less other than other general public needs that we have. So it's one of those things where you, if you're going to grow, you need to grow and handle water, and in the future, handling reclaimed water and handling sludge is going to be the key to accomplishing that. I appreciate your foresightedness in that, so, thank you very much, Alan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Alan. And Commissioner Alan, I guess I hadn't thought about the application, that there would be the potential if we're ahead of everybody else in the technology, that other cities may want to dispose of their sludge through us versus spurting as well, so that's an additional, assuming we have the capacity, and additional potential for revenue sources in cooperation with our other communities. Very good presentation, I'm very proud that we remain to, one of the innovators, the stuff that we have done with wastewater flies under the radar screen, but, you know, it's just amazing what we have been able to do in terms of internally developing innovative ways to approach things that we have to do anyways. So we look forward to having you back on May the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
That concludes our workshop for this evening, or for this morning. Three more minutes, and it's still this morning.